You guys, there are more seats over here if people want to sit down. And there's a door over here so you can get out.
Alright, good evening everyone. We love to see a crowd. I'd like to welcome you to the Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. The first thing we'll do is rise with the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible)
So many of us on the board were able to see the art show earlier this evening. And then we met an executive session for about 20 minutes to talk about some student personal matters. And we have a lot of students to recognize. So I'm going to hand it off to Mrs. Moses.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. We love to bring you forward to recognize achievement and outstanding things going on. There are a lot of people here and that's great. Is everybody in who needs to be in? There are more chairs here to this end. I'll make one more call if you'd rather sit than stand. Hello, everyone. You're right on time. Alright, alright. We are very fortunate tonight to have a number of reasons to celebrate. We have art, we have music, we have TSA, we have SUN ATI award winners. We have individuals who have distinguished themselves at FBLA and the list goes on. Mr. Walz, I think it may be best if we start with music.
That sounds great.
Alright.
I will bring the chamber choir in a moment. They're waiting patiently. This past year, we had the honor of being selected to perform at PMEA. It's quite an extensive audition process. It does go before a board of professional musicians and music educators. And out of about 100 groups that had auditioned, we were one of about 20 selected to perform at the All-State Music Convention, PMEA, in Erie this year. And that was among a lot of collegiate groups as well as some other high school and middle school and younger. So without any further delay, I'm going to bring in the chamber choir and we'll get started. Alright, they're going to perform one of the selections they performed in Erie. It is a spiritual called "Go Down Moses." It's a medley of two spirituals, "Go Down Moses" and "I've Been in the Storm So Long." And we will be accompanied by Vivian Vance on the piano.
(Singing) Go down Moses. Way down in Egypt's land. Tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. When Israel was in Egypt's land, let my people go. Oppressed so hard they could not stand, let my people go. Go down Moses. Way down in Egypt's land. Tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. The same old Lord old Moses said, "Let my people go." If not all smiles your curse for dead, let my people go. Go down Moses. Way down in Egypt's land. Tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. I've been in the storm so long. I've been in the storm so long, children. I've been in the storm so long. Oh, give me little time to pray. Oh, when I get to heaven, I'll walk all about. Oh, give me little time to pray. There'll be nobody there to turn me out. Oh, give me little time to pray. I've been in the storm so long. I've been in the storm so long, children. I've been in the storm so long. Oh, give me little time to pray. Go down Moses. Way down in Egypt's land. Tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. Go down Moses. Go down, go down, go down, go down, go down Moses. Go down, go down, go down, go down, Moses. Let my people, let my people, let my people go. Let my people go. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Go down. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Go down. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Go down. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Go down. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Moses, go down. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Moses, go down. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Moses, go down. Let's go down Moses. Go down Moses. Go down Moses. Moses, go down. Go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Moses, go down. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Let's go down Moses. Go down Moses. Let my people go.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reber, for suggesting that we needed to hear such a phenomenal performance. How wonderful. We're going to keep right with our students who have attained state-level recognition because I do believe they're between and among your group there.
Yep.
Can we move right into those?
Yes, please. And just before we do, if you don't mind, I'd just like to say thank you not only to the school board but also to Lama, the Lewisburg Area Music Association, and the Green Dragon Foundation. They fronted a little over half the money to help send us to Erie this year and bought them the outfits that you see them wearing tonight. So thank you.
Awesome. So let's start with the three who attend all state courses.
Hey, that would be Jalen Taylor, Katie Kelly, and Liam Shabehang. Katie was on soprano I, Jalen Taylor on alto I, and Liam Shabehang on bass I. For Liam and Jalen, this is their second year, and for Katie, it's her third. Here's a seat for tonight's stage.
We usually ask students if there's a comment or two you would share with us. Tell us about the experience.
Okay. For me, this is my third All-State conference. And I went to Nationals and All East also prior. And I think it was by far my favorite PMEA event that I've ever been to. I just loved the energy and I loved the conductor. And I loved getting to spend my last festival at such an amazing place with all of these wonderful people also at the conference. Even if we weren't in the same room the entire time, we still got to spend it together. And that was really, really sweet for me. And also getting to spend it with these guys. You guys are good.
Yeah, for sure. Like, these PMEA festivals are always just a really cool experience. Get to meet and collaborate with musicians from across the state. But I agree, this one was extra special to perform with our choir in one of these conferences. It was just super cool.
I also really enjoy getting the opportunity to perform at states with the chamber choir. And just getting to meet so many new people is always a real bonus, James.
We also had more All-State musicians.
Yes, Adam Davis. Let me call Adam. I guess I'm the only music director here tonight. So Adam Davis, he made it to Symphonic Band on percussion. And then we also have, is Trace Cassidy here?
Trace?
Trace Cassidy, Senior Trace Cassidy. He was part of the All-State Wind Ensemble on trombone. And then Canyon Schwartz-Intruber, who I heard he couldn't be here this evening. He was at State Orchestra for first violin.
Awesome. We're going to applaud him.
Alright, so this was my first All-State festival. And it was very surprising like how good people there were. So I had a good time learning about what the other percussionists did in their schools and like all the different techniques that they use. And I still learn a lot from the conductor. Like, he was a very smart guy, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask, are there any seniors excited to tell us what's next?
Yes, yeah, so is what you're doing.
Okay, alright. In part because of the amount of fun I've had at PMEA festivals, I'm going to be going into vocal performance, classical voice, hopefully to become an opera singer down the line. And I will be attending Boston Conservatory and Berkeley College of Music.
Hi, Jalen.
So not music related, but I will be attending Penn State in the fall for a double major with elementary education and psychology. Fantastic.
And I'll be going to Boston College this fall. So I'll be with Katie, basically, kind of. And yeah, my major will be undecided.
He has another year.
Mr. Walz, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Students, thank you very much. You're welcome to try to stay and fit in. We've got more celebrating to do. We also understand if this was all you signed up for today, we usually say you're welcome to go. And again, our thanks for coming and sharing wonderful music with us this evening. Mr. Walz, thank you as always.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, thank you. The next group of students that we want to recognize this evening are students from SUN ATI who have distinguished themselves at state-level competition. I am hoping Brenna Ewi is here. Brenna, raise, stand please and be recognized. First place Industrial Motor Controls and headed to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia in June. A round of applause. Tell us about the contest and your success.
So I competed in industrial motor controls. So that's like factories, kind of what you imagine when you think like factories and controlling like large plans of things. I'm sorry, I'm not from that. The competition itself was simultaneously the most stressful and the most satisfying thing I've ever done. And I'm currently practicing and hopefully can bring back good news when I compete at Nationals.
We wish you the best. Our other SUN student, Bryce Van Sickle. Bryce, first in mechatronics with a partner from Midwest and again headed to Nationals. A round of applause. I bet you have to tell some of us what mechatronics is and a little bit about your competition, please.
I work with different types of systems, like mechanical, fluid power, electrical, and we have to do a bit of programming also. There were four tasks and a written task. There were a programming task, a motor controls task, a pneumatic task, and a circuit measurement task where we had to calculate the voltage, average, and resistance in the circuit. It's definitely a bit stressful knowing that there are schools that have been there before you because SUN Tech is a one-year school while some of the other tech schools went there are three-year. So they've competed at states already before, so they already have some experience in competition.
And you distinguished yourself, you and your partner. Congratulations. Best of luck in Atlanta at Nationals. And thank you for being here with us tonight. But wait, there's more. Is Mr. Lawber in the room? Mr. Lawber? Alright. Then listen to the following members of our high school TSA who distinguished themselves at state-level competition at Seven Springs. If you are here, please stand and then we'll have you as well. Share comments with our group tonight. Nafe Bajwa. Nafe? Mariah Drexler. Mariah. Okay. Keon Faust. Alex Pigos. Caroline Schechter. And Isabel Wood. Alright, guys, we're going to go round of applause. Now it's free speech time. Who would like to start?
So above all, it was definitely a wonderful opportunity not just to kind of get some enrichment in the STEM areas, science, technology, but it was also a great opportunity especially for the seniors to kind of go out and meet other kids from across the state with some similar interests in the STEM fields. And even, we were even able to meet a lot of people going to the same colleges we'll be attending in the future. So it was definitely a great opportunity to kind of learn more about kind of what other people are learning and going to learn in the future and then kind of meeting these people as well.
Yeah, and it was just a really great experience to get to see all these different kids from other high schools and interact with people who are really all across the state. And it never comes to mind, but we were in Somerset, PA, which was a four-hour drive in a school van, which was, it was fun. We had to stop for gas at sheets some of the time. But it was a fun time just to get to meet all the different students from other high schools and get to compete events that sometimes aren't even held at the regional level but are only held at the state level. Like, oh, my, you know, soldiers. Yes. Yeah. I don't have much to say. They kind of covered it. We had a good time. We did events. And we got to meet a lot of people interested in the same things. Technology-related events. We had a good time. I already said that. That's about it.
Well, again, congratulations. I owe you, Haley, an apology because I have the paper right in front of me and I do read. But, but I missed including you with our SUN students. Oh, no. No, no, no. Haley Schneider Photography, one of my favorite areas. Haley, please stand. Please stand and be. What photography, what your experience was like, share with us, please.
Well, we just basically took pictures, like we got an assignment and we had to edit them. Sorry, I feel really bad. I get anxious. But yeah, it was a lot of fun. I'm not doing photography anymore for a career, but it was fun while it lasted. I feel really bad, I'm sorry.
You'll always enjoy taking pictures and we're glad you came tonight. And again, it's wonderful to recognize you for your accomplishment. More lists, more students, more things to celebrate. Let's do FBLA. Alright, Mr. Krieger. Do you need the master list?
Yes, if you'd like to mention by name.
Yes. So many wonderful students to recognize.
Alright, so if you guys are here, please stand up for us. Tyson Nichols. Gibson Omealy. Naveen. Oh, that's the one, yes, for Durham Bowl. Cool. Liam. Vivian. Ling Bell. Paige. Benjamin. Aaron DeSantis. Miles Vissero. Elsa Fallon. Connor Fellow. Alex Gilmore. Rita Jovol. Bree June. Justin Uchili. Brady Ryder. Kaye Schumacher. Kevin Severs. Sadie Vienredi. Keon Faust. Hope Kazuba. Ella Marcounis. Ling Han Won. Jacob Wise. Emma Bailey. Claire Driver. Josie Gudtakowski. Eli Kalber. Gillian Mucheler. Adriana Wren. And Ella Vance.
Your friends, please come right up front here all together.
Yeah, right up.
We need to bring you out of the crowd. That's wonderful. It does not matter. Mr. Krieger, Stardus, and then several of them, I'm sure, will share.
Absolutely. So another wonderful turnout this year with the FBLA group. The coolest thing as the advisor is knowing that these kids choose a topic, they pursue it, and their success is 100% of their own. So it's an area that's outside my realm and it's just their own hard work and dedication that produces these results. We had 36 of 39 qualify for states. Most of them, all except one who was injured the day before states, were able to attend. Of the 36, 10 of them qualified or 10 of them placed in the top 10, which for FBLA states, the award ceremony, you're in the Giant Center, 5,000 to 7,000 people, you get called down, you get to go up on the stage. It's a pretty cool experience. So 10 of them were able to make the top 10. Four of them placed top four in the state, earning qualification for Nationals. Three of them will be going on to Nationals this summer in Florida. Orlando? In Florida, Orlando this summer. I knew it was in Florida. But Gibson placed fourth and Intro to Parliamentary Procedure. Hope won the state title for journalism. And Ling Han won the state title for UX design. So again, just the pride that we can all share in their success knowing that from elementary school all the way up through, the foundation that they have as students is producing results in stuff that we didn't teach, though. So congratulations.
So some of you, please share your experiences, the contests you were in, something that we can all appreciate.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, alright. This was my third year doing FBLA and going to the state conference. And every year, it's just a super fun experience. And this year, I did economics. I did Intro to Parliamentary Procedure. And we're going to Orlando this summer. It was a wonderful opportunity. Mr. Krieger, Mr. West, they were the visionaries behind this whole thing. So thank you to them. Thank you to the school board and the GDF. Thank you all so much for your funding. It was a really wonderful experience.
I did journalism. It was a pretty stressful experience because I'm pretty bad at journalism. It was pretty shocking, surprise. I did win. But that was, that was sort of odd. I did get to go to the chocolate world, like ride and merchy with Mr. West and Mr. Krieger. I'm upset though because it cost like $10 to get our picture, but it was really cute. And that's a highly fun experience.
I did UX design. This is my first year doing FBLA. I thought it was a pretty fun experience. Never done it before, but going to Orlando. Yeah, I had fun.
I'm Tyson and I, this is my second year doing it. And I did Introduction to Financial Math. And it was a super fun experience that we got to go for two days. And even though I had to leave early for a day to make it back for a performance, I had a lot of fun during those two days.
I did computer problem solving and I had a lot of fun there.
I did Computer for Almond Solving, and I had a lot of fun there. And I learned one lesson: Don't do the bank that has 500 people in it next year. That makes it a lot harder to place. So that's a good lesson to learn. My second year in FBLA.
So this year was my first year in FBLA, and it was a great experience. I also did Introduction to Financial Math. And I thought it was really cool that you could go meet with different colleges and just the whole experience in general was great.
Me and Josie were a team together for Intro to Social Media Strategies. And I'm definitely gonna do it again next year. I thought it was a great experience, and I loved the people we did it with.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Claire. I thought it was really cool that we just got to meet new people, people who are in our events and see their perspective, and then also like hear the judges' perspective on what we did and how we can improve.
I did Global Strategies this year. And then last year, I did Introduction to Social Media Strategies, like they did, and it was really fun. And I'll do it again next year, so.
Thank you. All right, we have middle school award winners to recognize as well. In the absence of Mr. Morgan, I'll ask the following middle school students, if you're here, you know that you can make the line right up front. I'm hopeful that Cassie Banshu, Leslie Oroko, Kia Hutchinson, Daleen Castle, Anaya Bajwa, Cole Brothman, Jack Segal, Kayden Papson, Thomas Graham, Josh Martin, and Evan Young. We did very well with everybody tonight. First of all, these are state qualifiers, middle school level TSA. And Mr. Morgan wrote, "Students participated in 18 different events, taking top 10 in 10 of those 18 events." Two events, we took top 10 finishes. And total, we collected 12 top 10 finishes at the state conference. I saw them do it. It starts here and it goes down the line. Tell us about your event.
So this is my first year here in TSA in general. It states I placed top 10 for career prep, which is I did by myself. And then I placed top 10 in video game, which we had like all four of us. I think it was a really cool experience overall, like going to the place and seeing how everything was so professional, well done, like for your future. I was like, first time walking self-help. I was kind of a little nervous seeing all these schools here. But it was really fun, like going to each event, seeing other people as you did, as they are you, like as the project or genre or whatever it was. But yeah, regional states, like no matter like what I won or lost, I think it was like really cool, and I would do that again in high school.
I did, did you have the photography? I was shit, no, I didn't. Sorry. I did a lot of group events, but I had like a lot of fun, like overall. And I was really overwhelmed at first because I walked in and I was like, it's so much bigger than I thought it would be. Like, I didn't expect it to be as overwhelming as it was, but I had like a lot of fun. And even when I got comfortable there, it was still a little bit nervous. But we did take, place top 10 in video game and the video for, no, the, yeah, the, the service video for helping others. We made these little cards, and we put them in people's mailboxes and just to put like a smile on people's face. We weren't really expecting that to win, but it did, and that made me really happy. Yeah, it was really fun overall. Definitely try to do it again in high school.
This is also my first year going to the state conference. Me and Anaya won first for Digital Video Challenge. And like they said, we placed top 10 for video design. It was a really fun opportunity and nice experience overall.
This is my second year doing TSA. And it was really interesting exploring different technology related fields and kind of like deciding what I want to do in high school. And it was nice getting to know the high schools too and people from other schools, and I think it was a really good experience.
This is my third year in TSA and it's my second year going to the state conference. I think my favorite thing about it was just being with all these people that you can really relate to because you know how hard they work and you felt that through them. And it's just the excitement of it all. And I'm just so proud of all these people here from TSA. It's really incredible what you all do.
I did a lot of events, so many that I can't remember them all. I was on a team with, the only one that I placed top three in was with Cole and Josh, who isn't here today. We did Tech Bowl, which is kind of like, oh, oh. I didn't see it. Anyway, so we did Tech Bowl, which is kind of like a buzzer trivia sort of thing about technology. And we went up against some pretty smart people, and we beat them, which was interesting to see. It was interesting to see all the different events that were offered and trying to, you know, just see what interests you was cool. And I got to play a lot of basketball in my free time, which was nice.
This is my third year in TSA, first year in states. And I think it was just a really fun time with friends, getting to hang out with everybody, doing all this stuff. It was very chaotic. Some of the most memorable parts are chasing after people that haven't told us where they were going and have just disappeared. Come on, come on. But like, it was just a really fun experience with everybody. And we did a lot of fun stuff.
It was pretty cool. This is my second year in TSA and first year going to states. And I pretty much had no idea what I was doing most of the time, like in terms of where to go. So it was very helpful to have pretty much everyone else already had been here, already had been to states already, so they could show me around, show me the ins and outs. I placed third in one event, which was video game design with Josh and Evan. And yeah, it was pretty fun. There was food. There was a pool. There was a pool. I got this cool shirt. 10 out of 10, went TSA again.
This is my second year in TSA, and I'm in seventh grade, so I get to do it again next year. And this is my second time in states. I look forward to doing it next year. And it definitely helped me develop new skillsets that I would use later on in life, such as high school. It's also helped me develop like skills for like, like the job or career path that I want to do later in life, which is mechanical engineering. And it was a really fun experience to see like the whole place, because I've already been there, and it was really fun. I got second place in Tech Bowl with Jack and Cole. And then I got second place in the written exam portion of the Tech Bowl competition. So yeah, that's what I got.
So this is my first year in TSA and also my first year making it to states. Because I didn't do it last year, but I heard fun, I heard good things about it from Thomas and Josh. I remember Thomas specifically telling me how they hadn't finished one of their portfolios, so they had to do it on like the second to last day before it was due. And I thought it would be kind of fun to do like a project like that with my friends, which was probably the best part of TSA for me.
Well, thank you all. Mr. West.
I gotta tell you, this is a proud popular moment when you see these guys because I get up in sixth grade, and I just told the kids today, they start out, they're very timid in sixth grade, and they're, I make them do presentations, whether they like it or not, and you see them squirming up front. And then by the end of the year, they're like, when's the next one? They're so excited. And you see what you saw there, and you guys are seeing a product that's somewhat finished or at least on its way to be finished. So sitting here where I am, knowing where some of those guys were in sixth grade, is mind blowing. It truly is. And Michael said it best, is a lot of this stuff is stuff we don't teach. It's things that they just do. The braveness of the kids from Sun Tech, which I promote Sun Tech like crazy. You don't have to go to four year school to be awesome. And you know, it was Haley was, you know, of course, standing up front of people is difficult for these guys. So to see them do that is, for me, is really exciting. So anyway, so I did my stock market challenge, the budget game challenge, and I do entrepreneur challenges. We go to Husky Dog Pound, which is like a shark tank. And just like you've heard, state competitions. The thing that we do is a little bit different is my sixth graders compete against high school kids. So at every competition we have, we compete against high schoolers. And in some cases, we win. And so that's really awesome. But again, it's a tribute to their passion and they're, they just want to succeed. So again, this is one of those proud popular moments. I tell them, I have you once, but I bet if I'm gonna be with you forever because they're part of my story, just like I'm hopefully a little part of theirs. So first off, I just hope you guys all come up when I call your names. So I have the Husky Dog Pound Competition. And this was a competition where the kids worked in groups of around four. They had to come up with either a product or a service idea. Then they had to create a business plan. And just like you've heard from all these people that came up front, the most important thing isn't the successes as much as it is the experience. One of the things I tell kids is to appreciate the moment. And a lot of kids are always in their phones, which you guys know I'm talking about, your parents. And for these guys to really go to these different events, it's really about, you heard them say, the experiences that were involved, seeing kids that are maybe going to be their competition, wanting to win. So again, these are the things that really is the best part of these competitions, is the experience. So the Husky Dog Pound, we got to go to Bloomsburg. This was a competition we did in-house. There was about 40 teams. I have experts come in from the local businessmen, and women come in, and they are our experts. And they decided that Pop Health, which was Anna Lutzi, Natalie Evans, and Julian Cool, they are our top team, well, one of our top two teams. And Quick Fetch, Sophia Giambanco, Eliza Haley, Mason Bolden, and Leandro Delio Machado. So if you guys want to come up. And then we also have the Dream Learn Pitch Competition, which is a video submission with Penn CFL. If no one here knows Mrs. Carolyn Shirk, I know Michael and I do. There is not a harder working lady in Pennsylvania. She, and not just Pennsylvania, she has like the whole eastern coast. And they are brighter financial futures, and they just are amazing. And in Pop Health was, again, qualified for Penn State. And they are in the state championship there, which is a competition next Wednesday? Yeah, something like that. I guess Susquehanna on Tuesday, I think, in Penn State then. So they have a chance to win first in the state. And in Shine Blinds, which is Andeline Garankowski, Issa Lamparder, Amr Johal, and Luke Nagady, if you guys come on up too. And this group was Shine Blinds, and they have a phenomenal idea. And they also made it to Penn State. They're in like a satellite competition. So again, it's the top of the top, the best of the best. And they will be competing just against middle schoolers. So Penn State, just middle school. Stock Market Game, every kid does this, and the Budget Game. And I had Tyler Confer, where's Tyler? Tyler finished with $700,000. He took 100 grand, made it into 707 in two months. So yes, he has a card if you want to give it to people before you leave. And it does fail in comparison, sorry Tyler, to of course, Michael's Kevin, who ended up with 31 million or something. Yeah. So again, they're doing something right. So Tyler, come on up. Tyler finished fourth in the state. There was, I think, 12,400 some competitors. So he just hit the ground running and just kept going. I think I actually was in third going into the last day, if I'm not mistaken. Louis Drunken Miller took seventh place. And Taylor Goldenluthy took ninth. Where's Taylor? Is he right? There he is. Hey, buddy. And again, phenomenal. They all ended with over $370,000, which again, is amazing. And then our Budget Game Competition, is Henry here? I hope, Henry Kerber? Come on up, Henry. Henry was my number one team. This was out of 12,210 competitors, and Henry took sixth, which is first for me. And Madison McMurray, come on down, also a room niner. Some of these kids are my homeroom, so. And Madison finished 103rd, which again, is amazing. And lastly is Atticus MacArthur. Atticus, come on down. And so overall, basically, before I let these guys off, beginning of the year, we go over what their dreams are. From dreams, we go to what college education or therefore they need college education for their dream jobs. And then from there, we kind of work our way backwards. And then we get into finances, investing, you know, budgeting, all that kind of stuff. And so this is the result. So I hope they all get to their dreams, but right now, you gotta get to sharing. So if anybody wants to share, you don't have to, but just share your experiences. We did get to go to Penn College. We went to Susquehanna University. And those were for the entire sixth grade as part of this curriculum. And then two groups went to Bloomsburg, and I have two groups going to Penn State. So that's four universities in sixth grades, in sixth grade. And I have one student tell me, "Mr. West, I never thought I could go to college, but after seeing what I saw today, I really think this is what I want to do." So again, it's really about the experiences. So Natalie, you want to share?
Sure. Bloomsburg was a really great opportunity to, there was about four judges, and then there was like the timer in the back. And we did mess up a little bit, but we hope to have another, we hope to win this.
Like Natalie said, it was a great opportunity, even though we didn't place, but it's a great learning opportunity. So we know kind of what to expect when we go to Penn State, which we are hoping to place top three in, which would be awesome for us.
It was a really fun experience, and I'm really happy that my group was one of the groups to be picked.
I thought it was really fun to actually participate in these competitions. I thought that we weren't going to be able to do it, but we actually pulled it off. It was really intimidating, but we didn't place top. I thought we did really good.
I was very nervous during it, and I thought that we weren't going to do well, but I'm very surprised and kind of excited that we did do well and got there.
It was a great time doing research with my group, and I can't wait to present at Penn State coming this week.
It was really fun being with my friends and making it this far. And I just, I think I just want to keep on doing this. Just so fun.
Natalie, no tips, buddy?
No.
It was a fun experience, and I like hanging out with my friends. And I want to thank you, Mr. West, for teaching me all this value of the tool.
It's always a pleasure with the Golden. All right, good. I think I'll be here. I think we're really here.
I really enjoyed doing the Budget Game, and it was the first time I did anything like this. And I thought it was a really good experience.
So the Stock Market Game and Budget Game, they were really cool to do. And I guess it takes a lot of bravery to do them because like every, everything, everything you do could impact you. And I guess in this Budget Game, I learned from the best, Josh Martin, who placed really high in it last year.
He's won it, yes.
And it was really cool doing it.
Let me say quick truth before we go. Again, the adversity that Natalie said, again, you guys are seen to find a product. But when I was videotaping them, watching the struggles that the group had for just a moment, they could have easily just shut down. And they did shut down. And again, I've been coaching here for 30 years, teacher for 29, and that was probably the most proud moment of the entire competition, was watching them fight through that, and that was awesome. So again, they didn't win, but it was awesome. So anyway, so anybody else want to share anything?
Yeah, so I think this was an amazing experience because we could actually use these sources in the Budget Game as we go older. And it was just great with all the people, even though we did it differently.
Cool. All right. Sorry, guys, with the FBLA, I forgot about the other side. You're more important here. But we also had a group compete in the Dream Learn Pitch Competition through the Brighter Financial Futures. And for us, it's not part of what I do in the classroom. They have to brainstorm an idea. It's like a 40 minute to an hour long project just for the mental aspect. But these ladies, along with men, have took it upon themselves to also make a video.
But these ladies, along with men, took it upon themselves to also make a video outside class to qualify for the finals at Penn State. And they were one of the ten finalists and they actually finished third. So out of our time going to Penn State, we've never had a group finish top five. So for them to, to do this a hundred percent on their own again, with a, with a pretty cool idea, to finish third was, was quite an accomplishment for them. And it's presenting in front of a group of judges with all the other competitors in the room as well, is daunting. So for them to kind of, to step up and embrace that and to, to perform at such a high level was, was quite an accomplishment for them. So that's off to them.
Now we have to hear about the project.
You, you start.
Okay, so our, our business was, it's an app and it's called Movie Minders. So you basically can set up an account for yourself, where you put in your interests, things that you like, hobbies, things such as that. And then you can add friends. So then when you have a movie that you want to watch, you can select those friends and it'll generate a movie that has all your interests in it.
Yeah, so it was kind of a random idea. We had like a project in class. We were asked to create a business. And we didn't really think we would go any further with it. And then when we created it, Mr. Krieger thought it was a good idea to enter it into a competition. And I mean, obviously, we didn't really expect to go anywhere with it. But it was a really fun experience and placing third was a really cool bonus.
We need that in our house.
That was the thing, one of the judges, the, the judge said that every night when she sits down with her husband, they never even watch a movie because they spend more time looking for it. So having an app where they could, if you have a group of friends over, instead of that process, you can skip straight to including in the app who's there and then it generates based on the interests of the people.
Yeah, I thought it was really cool because all the sixth graders did it. So we have the chance to do it in sixth grade, but not necessarily go anywhere with it because it was our COVID year. So like going to Penn State wasn't an option really, just nothing really came with it. So it was really cool that we got to go on with this.
That's great. Thank you.
And the group we've had wait latest and longest, our own good, hardworking art department. When I asked them if they would please come and be recognized for an amazing art show, I said, you don't need to develop slides and present curriculum. We got to see the real thing with a wonderful exhibit down in the gym. But I do want to introduce to you Emily and Sarah and Christie and Bryce. And I said, step in, oh, earlyish, and we'll give you a, a round of well-deserved applause for all that you do in our art department. Thank you. Christie, you're the only one I'll ask to speak, maybe on behalf of the whole group. Tell us, please, about teaching art in the district and all that it does for our students.
Well, I want to say, we are tired. We might be a little hungry as well. It's been a, a long week. But it's been a lot of fun. It's very rewarding working with the caliber of students that we have here. The talent is just amazing. It makes our job easy when we have such talent. And also coming from families that really, they, they love the arts. And they really encourage the arts. And so we're very happy and very.
Blessed.
Blessed, yeah, blessed to work here. So we're just truly enjoying it.
I had a conversation with Vince earlier when he stopped by. Thanks for coming through the show. Out of all the IUs in our area, I think if there's one place to be an art teacher, this is where I want to be. So sincerely, it's very artistic support community from the board and the community. So thank you for what you guys do for us and we're fortunate to be here.
Do you guys want a cookie?
Because we have cookies.
I just said I wanted a cookie.
Right, George, yes.
I'll take one with me. I'll eat, I'll eat in the car because I'm driving home. My, my husband got someone else.
Safe travels home and again, thank you.
Moving on to our sort of normal board activities, the first seven years. We took the board on agenda items. And someone wants my customer cookies.
Yeah, they're more cookies.
We do not have any comments online.
Do you have anyone in the audience? Thank you. Next up is the very exciting annual food service report.
Speaking of cookies, I can't believe no one stayed.
Thank you again. I would like to tell you that I've been thinking about this moment for the last nine months. But we actually had a really successful year that I'm kind of excited to share with you.
Next slide, John.
Instead I had to say next slide, free slides, a little bit. So some points, we just had to try to do the high-level items. But something that I'm pretty excited about is we actually had some changes to our PA school code here recently that basically wrote in free breakfast for students for pretty much ever. It would take a legislative action to change that, so we told we can pretty much count that. Along with that, reduced lunches also receive free lunch. That affects about a dozen of our kids, but every little bit does help. Some additional menu offerings that we've had this year, we've had Italian Dunkers, which were a huge hit, especially at elementary schools. Loaded Ranch Chicken and Cheese Tots, Cinnamon Swirly Trusso, which was patented by our own Vince. Orange Chicken and Chicken Tikka Masala. All these are kind of just some new items that were pretty well received. Thanks to you guys, we were actually for the first time, and I don't know if you've ever been, fully staffed. And I'd like to thank all of you for raising the wages for my staff. Because a happy staff is a great staff to work with. One thing I noticed from the Chamber of Quire and everyone is they kept talking about the people they met and the teams that were on. And I like think I've got the best apartment in the entire district. And it's really because of like they care about the kids and feeding the kids. And I think that's why we were so successful this year. We did change milk vendors about, I'm gonna say November, which doesn't sound like a big deal. But our former milk vendor was actually based out of New York and don't have to abide by Pennsylvania laws. And because they felt that they could, they like almost tripled the cost that we were still paying for our milk costs. So all seventeen of us districts around here, part of the central system and group, said, we want to meet with you. And they said, oh, okay, well, thanks, but we're not changing anything. So we all went out and got different milk vendors and then they tried to come back. But because of that, not only did we save money this year, but we also had no issues with the milk carton shortage twenty twenty-three, which I know you all were on pins and needles about what was going on.
Thank you.
So our program participation through April, as you can see, something I'm really proud of is our breakfast participation. You can see how they're green. We, for a total, we're forty-two point five percent increase from last year. We just actually had our central system kind of food service directors meeting today. And we had the highest increase in percentage across this area. Some things I'd like to say why is actually we have fantastic principals and teachers that help promote breakfast for the kids that are walking in. Grabbing Goes is just, is a really good program and everyone's kind of in it together. I also like to thank, a special shout out to all of our head custodians. Sounds kind of weird, but whenever we're kind of short-staffed, they're the first ones to jump in and help. We have excellent head custodians, Brian, Wanda, Tammy, and Jim. I couldn't have done everything we did this year without them. They have a really good relationship with all of my staff. The next two slides, you'll see some financials, three slides actually. So this one's going to show you a comparison from last year to this year. Our revenue and expenses. Obviously with the increased wages, we actually increased the average labor cost by about four dollars and eighty-one cents per hour. So just under five dollars, which I was a little concerned about, if you ask me, since Moser or Vince in every single academy we had this year. But as you can see, the best news of the day for me is we're in the black. We are not in the red. So we ended so far with April at one thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Which I'm pretty proud of our staff for that. I think that is a testament to, we kind of tightened our belts and found interesting ways to do things. We kind of begged, borrowed, pleaded with anyone we could to get free money. There's a nice lady at the USDA that gave us some good money for our DOD program. The Department of Defense has an excellent fresh fruit program that we took advantage of. And it was because of that that I can say we ended on a, on a good note this year. Next slide's going to show you the revenue, revenue trends from last year. Our, it's pretty very similar. As you can see there, the next slide's going to be expenses, also very similar. Our revenue is up, but so are expensive, expenses. Anyone that unfortunately goes to the grocery stores, you know, seeing the extra carton, you get three bags of groceries and now it's a hundred and twenty dollars. It's no different for school districts. We're still buying the same things, just slightly more in bulk. But our costs are also going up with that. Some food service concerns, it's always going to be kind of an issue with procurement. With the trending costs of groceries and just food products, it's going to continue to go up. So we have to kind of be mindful about keeping up with inflation. We do have aging kitchen equipment. We do preventive maintenance every summer to try to, you know, kind of button everything up as best we can. We do try to repair before we replace. I believe we did replace one or two reach-through coolers this year. But that's okay. And those coolers we now have on a list, so we'll start cycling things out. When they get older, that we can keep things cycled so we don't have going on problems. So we're working on that. We do have some proposed price increases for lunch. We're looking at a proposed increase of a quarter per meal, trying to help keep up with inflation. The price for that, for singles, if they, every day for the hundred days, would be up forty-five dollars extra a year. But we're thinking that should kind of work out with that. We use the USDA's paid lunch equity tool to kind of determine what the number should be. And then I believe I spoke with you or something, I know Mrs. Moser let you guys know. At some point earlier this year, they were talking about changing nutrition requirements. And they finally passed that final ruling here a couple of weeks ago. So I'll kind of give you the high-level items on that. But basically, we're looking at reducing added sugars in foods. They have a lessened added sodium requirement. Congress stepped in to say, you can't do this, it's not feasible. So they did kind of work that back. The one thing I'm kind of really excited about is the additional breakfast options. Before they passed this, we had to have so many carbohydrate balance before we could have more protein for breakfast. And they undid that. We can now serve more protein than we could before. So, which I think is a rigand, so more, you know, eggs, more cheeses, more yogurts, that type of thing. Now, the only downside to that is when it takes effect, which it starts in the, so we're starting with twenty twenty-five and ends in twenty-seven for the final, everything to be in place. We are going to have to have an overhaul of our menus as far as getting nutrition requirements updated in the system. But the good news is most of the things like the added sugar, it's kind of lessen, will actually be done at the manufacturing level. So we won't have too much of a problem here with that. So that's the good news. But any questions about any of this? Yes, Mr. West?
Two questions. First one, what is an Italian dunker? The second question is, how are we doing with the sort of people who fall into like negative balance?
Those are great questions. So the first question, an Italian dunker, basically it's a scratch meal. They'll make basically like, kind of like a pizza, roll it up, put matcha cheese and they cut it into sticks. And they have like, it's basically like a cheese stick, like, like, you know, you're from like. But they're delicious. I had a picture, but I was told no pictures for the slides.
What?
Outrageous.
Come on.
I know, I didn't know they had a picture for the text.
Yeah, they're gonna have.
You show up without text, that person's actually gonna have some.
I think we can work on that. I, I promise you, I actually had some of that, they're, they're really good. And the kids also like them, so it's gonna be.
I mean.
Had the wellness committee.
I am done.
So, and your second question's, oh, okay. So yes, unfortunately, the hot item across all food service departments in the state and throughout the nation is the how to collect lunch debt. The short answer is there's no great way to collect lunch debt. John, I believe we're about ten thousand total.
We were.
Well, I'm getting that, don't steal my hunger.
We were at a margin of only ten thousand.
So we were about ten thousand, but Giant is phenomenal. They're a great company. I'll give them proud. They didn't ask me for this, but they actually discussed a check for a little over seven thousand dollars. And that was actually raised by the community. Give or go and buy groceries and say, would you like to round up to the nearest dollar, which I encourage everyone to do. Because of that, they raised a little over seven thousand dollars that they gave to us that we can use to help pay down all that lunch debt for those students, which is an absolutely fantastic thing. So thank you.
Yeah.
And then we just apply that across the board, so everyone who owes money owes a lot more.
John? We took care of it. Yep, we entered that amount, four thousand across the district.
Thanks. Any other questions? I will always come back.
I had asked you one the other day, did you?
I have that number. Okay, so yes.
I had asked him what the participation rate was for our employees, our staff.
And I was like, no one's ever asked me that. I'm not even sure if that's reported, but I did, John helped me. So yes. So for this year, for the staff, we had one thousand four hundred and six lunches served. And there were thirty-seven breakfasts. I have to check that number because I think that's a little low. But we'll check it out. But I do know the lunches is private access, and we had a little over fourteen hundred lunches served for staff. But that was a great question.
And they pay the, the, what, do they, do they pay the student price?
No, there is a staff price.
Okay, there is a staff.
Yep, and that's also set by the paid lunch equity tool. Like we have to have it basically in line through USDA regulations.
And does that mean they get a little bit more food than what a student will get, or is it the same?
Technically, no, but I do know my staff in yes. Get a little bit extra there because, you know, again, like it's, and it's, it, the staff we have here is just fantastic. Everybody gets along with everyone. Our principals, I mean, you guys both stepped in to help with breakfast and lunch. Teachers, our police officers step in, whenever there's a need, they just hop right in and they just love it.
It's because of the cookies.
Yes. The cookies are quite good. Those lemon ones, have you had those? Just go back to the cats on the truck and I see it. But no, it's.
Notice we didn't pass any of those out.
I, I do believe the staff usually gets a little bit more on their dreams, but yeah. Any other good questions?
I was just gonna ask about the paid lunch equity. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yes, I might have to direct John a little bit on this one. It's a business manager special. Basically, they have formally, I think, put in your numbers and everything. And it says, you need to raise your lunch by this amount. But John, you can take it from there.
Yeah, so it's actually an Excel spreadsheet that we download from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And it trends year over year. It takes into account your current lunch prices. And then it couples it with inflationary factors. And it says, if your current lunch price is this, then it needs to be at least X. And so if it's not X, you have to raise prices in order to meet whatever that level is. So you saw here, our paid lunch equity calculation came out to three dollars and eighty-four cents. And so that's what our base elementary lunch is going to. So again, it's a federal and state mandate that we have to meet.
Yeah, is the idea that we're just keeping up with inflation?
It's keeping up with inflation, keeping up with costs. Yep.
There's also a part of formula that if you are, if you run really negative, it'll take that in consideration for what you have to put out for next year. It's a, it's a pretty good tool. If you don't do it, the others from USDA will actually yell at you. So it's a good thing to do.
Michael, sales of a la carte and like add-on items typically have a little bit more profit.
Yes.
Are we seeing those trend, are you, from year to year, are we seeing?
At the older grades, especially the, the high school's gonna be the biggest they have, but they also have the most options. But yes, those definitely help. Those are priced a little bit more than like our regular meals because we try to keep the meals more affordable for everybody because you need to eat. Whereas the a la cartes are more like, oh, you have a lecture, do you want this? It does help, but the, the higher grades, middle school, and mostly high school are gonna have those higher trends though. We see a lot of like our athletes that are taking, and they are, they are smart snacks, whichever, and I think is familiar with that. Not going to talk about that in a second, but they do take those with them and it's a, it's a good system.
Are we seeing more, like a higher sales in those items or from one of the, you know?
Yeah, we are, we are seeing an increase in the revenue in a la carte items, yep, over previous years. Yes.
I mean, it's good to be in the black. It's.
I cannot, I cannot tell you how it's, I'm like, oh, it's gonna be in the red. And then John's like, good news, we just crossed over and like, oh. I cannot, I cannot tell you how it's gonna, I'm like, oh, it's gonna be in the red. And then John's like, good news, we just crossed over and like, oh, so.
It's great.
Perfect timing.
I was curious if we saw an increase in sales in those.
Yeah, I will say our a la carte sales definitely held our bottom line, which is kind of why we have them.
They sure did with my son.
I think he's a school fan, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other questions?
All right, thank you.
I don't have a question, I just wanted, I would save it for the end, but Michael's not gonna be here anymore. So every year, in communities kind of around Lewisburg, there's a lunch program that's put on where families that need food assistance can pick up meals and things like that. Lewisburg's always been kind of left out of that for various reasons. But our snack pack chair Lynn Berg and Abby Goldmuthley, who is a previous snack pack chair, have been really passionate about trying to get those services in Lewisburg as well for our students who are home for the summer. And this year, it looks like it's going to happen. We're gonna have sites here in Lewisburg. And Michael was very, very helpful in getting the information that we needed to say, this is in need in our community. And let's, let's be part of the program. So I just wanted to kind of give the kudos to Michael for helping them with that information because I know that, that made a difference.
I appreciate what you do and what Lynn and Abby do. I think it's a really great thing. One of the other hats I get to wear is the whole of the liaison and I get to build a lot of houses. And we're very fortunate that we live in a very affluent community, but not everyone is at that same level. And it's, I appreciate what's all being done with that to get that out for reasons that they need that the most. And I really think it's important. I'm really glad that we're actually making strides in that direction. So thank you for all you do. I know you were a big help and push for that too, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, everybody.
Next up, the proposed final budget, which is not the final final.
No. Yes, just the proposed final. So you have before you the proposed final. Tweaked a little bit from last time, as Mrs. Moser has mentioned, some staffing additions, paid for by some additional state revenue that we hope will be coming down the pike when our friends in Harrisburg decide to move. So we would ask that you approve both the proposed final budget as well as the necessary advertisements as we move towards the final, final budget.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So moved. Second. Moved by everything, sent by Dr. Grant. Any discussion or questions, anything you'd want more information about before the final file? Which is the first meeting of June? Which is one month from now, it's kind of crazy, it's going fast. Okay. Paula, Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item is the PSBA voting delegates. We had a discussion last time of who was interested and I didn't write it down, I'm gonna be honest. So who would like to be the delegates? You can do it in person or you can do it via Zoom.
I can do it.
Okay.
I can all that.
Okay.
I can do it.
Okay. So we need a motion to.
So moved.
Make the thank you. So what we've done, Paula's recording and we essentially are saying this week is Kristen and Jamie. And so we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mattis, for the second. Any discussion? Thank you for doing this. And then everyone have to keep in mind for next year, it's great if every person on the board gets to do it at least once, just to see the proceedings. Okay. Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. The next item is the jet form website, and this is the idea that we need like two of the licenses that allow us to make forms that can collect payments and maybe customize them the way we need them, calling out to the folks who currently make our forms, we want it to do it in-house. So I need a motion to approve. Motion. Moved by Dr. Grant, second one is Kraus, any discussion? Okay. Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item is public school facility improvement grant resolution. This is what allows us to seek the grants, right?
Yes, this is the resolution to seek grant that I have been writing here in the last couple of days. We have an end of May deadline for it, so it's important for us to move this piece forward. Our intended project to utilize the funding, if successful, is the completed restoration of the middle school roof. Three component parts. We have, and I attached for you, the project estimates. Those go into the grant as well as this resolution signed by the board that says, we're good for the twenty-five percent that the project would cost with seventy-five percent coming through the grant monies.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve? So moved. Second. Second by Ms. Stanton, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is to clean the exterior of county elementary. Do I miss something?
In the high school.
In the high school.
Oh, sorry.
Areas of. Big fan.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Stanton.
Second.
Sent by Ms. Kraus, any discussion?
I always like to point out when it is a local business and will be doing the work, and they are a very, very local business.
Yeah. And Hannah was one of the students.
She sure was, yeah.
I know, I should see her.
They do a really great job. They do the cleaning of my offices and they do the windows and outdoor, they do a fantastic job.
Okay, there's no further discussion? Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yeah.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item is the election of the CSI board of directors. You have a yellow sheet in your information folder, you have a book for Mary Ann. The slate is there. Mary Ann, you wanna make any comments about anything?
It's all good people.
Okay. I forget, we just checked and handed in, right?
Hand it in and then it's submitted.
To who?
We just send this, this away.
Paula, do you need anything else from us? Or just, oh, I can't read that. It's weird that it's not named.
I know.
We have to identify ourselves. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna ask for procedure. We don't actually have to pass the slate unanimously as a board motion, do we?
I think we have the ballot, so.
Yeah, I think it's just a.
Okay. If anybody has, this is our time to. No, we're good.
Yep.
I believe.
Call it, call it, give this department, permitarian, if you want.
I remember this came up last time, but honestly, you only do a thing once a year. Okay, the next item is an actual election. So what would happen now is someone would either nominate themselves or nominate another to be the treasurer. We would then have multiple people or one, we would close the election, we would put down our choice for treasurer on the pink slip. Hand it over, Paula reads it out, is that still true?
I mean, if.
John reads it out?
Yeah, you can, if you, if you have more than one person, absolutely.
Right.
Nominate Kristen Kraus.
Okay.
We're closing nominations.
So we have a nomination, we want to close, we need a second, we want to give you a second to the motion to close the nominations.
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hanos. In that case, we haven't even wrote it down.
Thank you.
Oh, we need, we need, we do need to vote them. Okay.
You have to vote on closing nominations.
We did, yes, that's what, we just, we only have is the closing nomination. So all in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the sole nominee for consideration is Kristen Kraus. So now we need a motion to cast the ballot, I believe.
Boom.
Okay, move by Dr. Mattis, second.
Second.
Sent by Dr. Grant. And this also can be by voice, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you again for your service, Kristen.
He's out here.
That's okay. You don't remind me what I'm voting for. Okay. Our next item is new business, the starting in subwages. Actually, John, if you wanna remind us.
So yes, you have before you the schedule of starting in substitute wages for 2024, 2025, which is the same as what we had last year. Last year, as you recall, we made a substantial increase in our starting in substitute wages. We found them to be very useful, and so we would ask you to continue them at this level this year for the upcoming year.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this ratio?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Stanton?
Second.
Sent by Ms. Lyons, any discussion? Since this is video recorded and we have the opportunity, can someone tell the public if, how it is possible to the IU to become a substitute teacher?
You just go to that class. They do a whole training session, and it's pretty remarkable.
Do I understand that we still have a substitute teachers shortage?
We have good numbers, we can always use more numbers. We employ both the CSI U guest teachers who are not PA certified but hold college degrees and take the training course that Mary Ann described, or they come in with the traditional Pennsylvania certification. We've been fortunate to fill our needs most days here, and on nice days in spring with personal days for many staff to use. We've been running a little short, but again, we've been very fortunate and we keep our sub-rate one of the highest in the area. Our substitute teachers enjoy coming in and working with our students. So I can say we're in a relatively good situation with respect to substitutes.
The training is at the CSI U?
Yes.
And how would one go about?
Just go on line, yeah.
Or give them a call, either way. Is it just a one day?
No, no, it's a little more intensive than that. And then they also have a process by which you can sort of move around for certification as well, so.
Okay, so it's like a, kind of like a sign up for a class?
Yeah.
So you do it over a time period?
Over a period of time, it's not a long.
I think they have remotes in person.
Most of it, yes, they have both. Thank you.
Is it offered in the summer? Do you know?
I don't have the answer to that.
I think they had a spring class that was sworn starting last month. I don't know, I can look.
So you've heard Mrs. Moser say it, we do have a very favorable substitute teacher rate, so thank you all. So now we need to vote, Paula. Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item is expulsion of students 2024-A, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mattis?
Second.
Sent by Ms. Stanton? Paula. Mr. Fetzger?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. In board information, we have an MO with chemical behavioral health. Do you want to hear a little bit more about this, like this?
I can show that one.
Okay.
That agreement is for a program called cognitive behavioral intervention trauma in schools, CBITS for short. It's gonna be happening at our middle school next year. It's gonna take two cohorts, one in the fall and one in the spring. It's group therapy as well as individual sessions for students that have some trauma in their life. And it's a benefit to us, and it's also covered by a CTT grant. So those funds are utilized in from that grant, so. Our middle school is looking forward to utilizing that for some students that would be benefit from that.
So specific, it's just specific students, small groups, six to eight referred, got it?
Yes.
Two cohorts of six to eight students.
Okay.
For that, I think.
Next, data information, the new curriculum resources for the coming school year.
Yep, and they're listed there, we'll have them on your screens. We've got some new textbooks for different courses, as well as some literature titles and some additional resources that we're using at the elementary. And this was our preview, any question you have, welcome to answering your phones.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, or wanna know more about any of those resources?
How we? So, sorry. There's some textbooks, I see one from 2017, which obviously isn't super old, but older. How do we, how do we make a determination on?
Our teachers are reviewing things that would work for their class. And that is a book that I looked through as well, just to verify that it's, I mean, Spanish one content isn't changing a lot. But the other ones are much more updated because of content that potentially could change on social media and things like that.
Okay.
We have, reviewing multiple different vendors, looking at samples and getting approval and moving to purchase later on.
Thank you.
The additional resources, is that just available to teachers at the beginning?
Those are mainly more interventionist that are reading specialists we use. And those are gonna be things, one of them is. Yeah, but mainly those are interventions, the top one there is a language screener that's gonna be utilized in kindergarten specifically. The main part, those are reading specialists, things that they would like to utilize with students in our MTSS block as well as St. Peter's.
All right, the next item is the board presence report, and I know that Kathy has some items that we, since we think alike, but I will share one. Well, I don't know, are you gonna share that we're having our next meeting at the middle school? Okay, I'll share that, I'll share that one piece. For the purposes of being able to be familiar with our buildings and the experience that our students are having, and also to identify spaces as we have some new needs for a select population of students, so we're going to be taking the road at the middle school for our next meeting. And we will also have, again, a work session. We're still sort of refining the way that we do the organization of the agenda, so we look forward to welcoming the public to the middle school for our next meeting. All right, and then I'll pass it off to Kathy.
All right, so the operative word in my report tonight is busy. We have been very busy. Busy in our classrooms with state assessments, AP exams, and the coming Keystone and of course exams. Our classroom teachers are finishing last units of instruction, and our students are completing projects and special lessons and activities that often take us outside on field trips and to special assemblies and programs. We've been enjoying spring concert season as well across all our buildings. Our clubs, our teams, and our student groups have been busy. You saw an example of much of that this evening. You saw an example of much of that this evening. We've been enjoying the effort to recognize and celebrate their accomplishments. We'll continue recognizing students with our awards programs that are scheduled now for Lindtown Middle School and High School in the coming days. We've been busy at the district level, Vince's good work on our comprehensive plan. We've been learning lots through asking students their opinions and thoughts and our current survey is out for staff and parents to complete. I think I looked before I came in this evening.
Four hundred.
Four hundred, there you go. I was going to say three hundred plus, so four hundred. We're pleased that everyone is taking the opportunity to complete that survey and our community forum is scheduled for May 20th, another opportunity to garner more insights uh, from our community. Our facilities work is underway with the middle school wiring project. Our field projects at both Pauling and the high school are progressing through the planning and permitting processes and John and Jeremy Long and Delbert Gallegos have been busy. We as a district have been busy with the end of the year traditions that mark the end of each school year. We held prom last weekend. Mrs. Dunkelberger and Mr. Krieger's junior class put together a wonderful evening. More than 250 students and their guests were in attendance. Our field days and fun days are planned at elementary and middle school levels as well. SUN ATI students will receive their program award certificates on May 22nd in an annual ceremony that for the last two years has been held on the front lawn of the SUN Center in New Berlin. This year, all SUN students will wear cords to commemorate their accomplishments. You'll see the orange cords, they'll wear them at SUN and then they're going to wear them with their graduation gowns at their five respective sending districts graduation as well. Mrs. Ditmar and Mrs. Ikey, as well as our high school counselors, are working with Bucknell staff on the details for our high school graduation ceremony. Tuesday, June 4th, please mark your calendars, will celebrate the 135 members of the class of 2024. Their names are on the consent agenda tonight for you to approve. And finally, tonight I share that we're busy with planning for the coming school year. We're writing curriculum and selecting resources. We'll come together at our next meeting on May 23rd to recognize and celebrate our retirees as well. And a reminder, as Erin said, that the board meeting will take place in the middle school that evening. We've posted our openings, we've started our plans to meet staffing needs for the coming year and we're working through kindergarten registration. We will have 109 rising members of the class of 2037. Just sharing the number, 109 to date for kindergarten registration.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next thing is board design committee reports. I was going to join the opportunity to highlight the SUN ceremony. Thank you, Kathy. Uh, but everyone has it if you look in your info sheet. And so, um, I'll pass my copy to the press so we have that. The next item is the, oh, did you have anything from behind you?
No, we need, next week.
All right. Our consent agenda? Um, we just need a motion to approve, as Kathy pointed out, the graduating class of 2024 is on there, as well as, you probably see other things.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Lyons?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stanton? Dr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Feath?
Yes.
Dr. Jawanski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Motion carried. My next item is citizens' comments to the board on the non-agenda events. Anybody have?
There are no, no comments online.
Okay, thank you. We'll do director's comments and then, Vince, we'll start with you.
Uh, just one thing real quick, as Kathy mentioned, community forum is on the 20th, uh, 6:30 right here. Hopefully get some good folks coming out to give their opinions on our drafted plan and find out what they, if they want to contribute to the plan, so.
Can I, can I just say that I had to quash a little bit of, I had a couple people reach out to me and say, is this meeting about changing buildings? Are we going to be swapping students? And I said, where does that even come from? I don't know how that happened, but no, this is a normal sort of cyclical thing that happens. So hopefully that'll get out there tonight, that this is a normal sort of come and give us your feedback and, uh, there's no major changes coming down the line.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, going back in time to the beginning of the meeting, I just wanted to say thanks again to our core student team. Um, yeah, go down those section, my dear, someone's, someone's wanted to hear. Um, and I know we call them like extracurricular type, but there's nothing extra about all those programs and participation and just hearing the testimony from the students about all of that learning they're doing and, um, yeah, it's just great to see the district doing so many great things and our students doing great things.
I agree wholeheartedly. I am just really blown away by the public speaking skills. They come in on forms for adults as well, but it's just great to see that our district is giving these young people the opportunity to speak however it is they wish to speak and share and it's celebrated by all of us. Um, I was thrilled with some of the technical skills that students are getting to work on at the various, um, state levels and the SUN tech students, I really appreciated hearing exactly what it is they are learning because it's so high level and they're really preparing for, you know, fantastic careers with, um, their high level skills and the competitions that are going to be sent for us. So I was pleased to hear all of that.
Michael, thank you for adding some humor into your presentation. Um, you're probably not surprised to hear me say that's not the most exciting presentation to give, but thank you, I appreciate the, the humor that you added into it and it definitely kept our attention, so, um, thank you for that. Um, I don't think there's anything better than to hear students talk about their experiences and, um, you know, the, the laughter that comes along with that, the camaraderie that really shines from, you know, listening to their, to them talk about their, uh, their experiences. Obviously camaraderie with each other, but also, um, just, you know, it really stuck out to a lot of, uh, the relationships that they have with their teachers and advisors. Uh, it's just amazing, we talk about, you know, relationships here in the district a lot and, you know, but you, the one, uh, student said that one of her highlights was getting a picture of the chocolate tour with her, you know, with the teachers. So things like that, it just, it's amazing to hear the relationships that they have, the experiences that, uh, we afford our students with here in the district. Um, and there's a lot of laughter with some of the funny, uh, middle school responses are always a lot of fun, so, um, I really enjoyed having everyone here tonight.
To just kind of build off of, uh, Jordan, I mean, obviously our students are amazing, we've been seeing all year about it, but I also think really we get so used to like the things we have, like the TSA and the budget challenge and all of those, but the fact that our faculty puts that much extra into those things, that not only, obviously there are things that interest them, but they, they are so passionate about it. Um, I know just like my son having gone through with Mr. Weston going to those things, like that is such an experience that the kids love, but also it is, I mean, we all have jobs, it, it is a lot of extra work for the people that are doing that and for them to do that year and year again, that it's things that people look forward to when they reach those grades. It's just really, just continues to say about what happens in this district that we kind of assume is going to happen. I think people assume that they're going to have a chance to go to the Husky Dog Pound, you know, they assume they're going to have a chance to go to Penn State. And I think that is just amazing because of what our faculty does for them and I just, it's kudos, I mean, same with the art show out there, I mean, everything I feel we do here is, other schools do parts of it, but the, the way it goes is above and beyond. I mean, the amount of work that the art department has to put into that art show every year, but kids look forward to it, they're excited. It's not something you're dragging your kids to, to like go see, like, I mean, they're excited, they want to run around with their friends, they want to do the scavenger hunt. It's just so amazing and like Jordan said, that the experiences that the students are having with teachers, I mean, you could see the chamber fire, you know, just the interactions as they were leaving the room, like how close they are. It's just always fantastic, it's just so good to be part of the district and I'm just really proud to be part of this district. Um, also I think this, um, the memorandum of understanding for the, um, C, CBITZ program I think is amazing. Um, it is really hard to find cognitive behavioral, behavioral therapy in this area, trauma informed therapy, I mean, counselors in general are very hard to find, but then when you find things that are actually specializing in this, I think is really great. I mean, we have a lot of trauma in the world and in populations and so I think that's just, I think that's great that that's something that we're looking at doing, so.
May is mental health awareness month, so this is very good for, this has been very good for my mental health, I think for all of ours and our students. Um, so yeah, ditto to all of that and, yeah, that's all I got.
It's like an embarrassment of riches, this meeting. It is, like coming from the art show, which, um, it literally took me back to participating in that art show. I mean, it's, and, and the, the National Honors, just Art Honor Society, we used to set the whole thing up with the faculty members and it was, I don't know if they, do they still do that? It's amazing, let me just say, I think I might go back to that, but it was, um, it was a real experience and so then to walk in and know that I've done that with both of my children and then to come in and just see this tradition continue and how important it is and how well attended it is. But the music, like just every bit of it is, um, it's an embarrassment of riches and we, exactly like everyone else has said, we cannot take that for granted, we have to continue to support that, the arts and STEM and technology and business, all the things, all the things, they're so important and making sure that our students know that they have some, they have options, they've got a lot of options. And none of them are wrong, at least in that, in that area. There are some options that are wrong, I'd like to stress. So anyway, thanks to everybody.
I will just say congratulations as well to everyone that was recognized tonight. Um, and for the first time ever, I think I got goosebumps during a school board meeting with the chamber fire, that was absolutely, I was literally blown away, it was absolutely amazing, they were incredible. So, kudos to them.
I thought you were going to get goosebumps from Michael's presentation.
Oh, well, sorry. I'm normally new to Michael's presentations. You are.
It looks like we've toured the middle school locker rooms.
That's right. Except for that one time, those were goosebumps.
Only because they're haunted, yes, right.
It was something else.
Moaning verbal.
So I think of my memories, right, this is my ninth year on the board and I'm trying to figure out how it's the first time, with the exception of recorders and ukuleles.
Oh, wow.
That we have had music.
Yeah, that's great.
And I, I think we need more of that. And, uh, we certainly need more, we certainly need Italian dunkers.
I'll mix it in there. Twenty-third, right?
And I have it on good authority that next year's food service report will actually be to music.
With photos.
Bob Allen.
I was just going to give him Bob Allen.